Okay, like called community hall meeting for Monday, October 6, 2025 to order. Roll call, please.
Mayor Gavino.
Here.
Trustee Christensen.
Here.
Trustee Lowry.
Here.
Trustee Nedvedge.
Here.
Trustee Salazar.
Here.
Thank you. Audience comments? Trustee comments?
One quick one.
Yes.
To kind of go along with what Steve was saying with the Berman Tower, I wanted to suggest, now that Dale has passed, that we look into potentially painting the name Berman Tower on the actual tower.
Is there a plaque there? Was there a plaque over there?
Yeah, there's a plaque and a big boulder at the sidewalk.
But since it's all lit up, I've seen other pillars and buildings and things like that that are stark white, and you put black letters on them, it looks pretty sharp.
Maybe you see some pictures or something.
Yeah.
And will it wash out with the lighting, or will that cause a problem with the colors?
As long as you paint it, it won't cause any shadows. If you did, like standoff lettering, then you have some shadow.
It looks tacky here. I don't know how big you're talking about. Maybe something Steve can look into, just to see what's... Is it okay with everybody?
Yeah, I think that's a...
I mean, I really would have to see, you know, sort of an idea of what...
Right.
I mean, I obviously, conceptually know what you're talking about, but like how it could look.
Yeah.
And obviously, it would be something that would cost money, and that's fine, and the maintenance to keep the paint up and all that.
Well, the tiff. Would they come out of the tiff, right?
Yeah, it could come out of the tiff. I guess the big question would be is, just since we had future plans, have been on hold for a while, as far as future improvements to the tower, I guess I would ask, is there any preference for where I would be looking? Because at one point, there will potentially be a deck.
Right, overlooked.
About where the ring of lights is now, in theory, there will be a deck one day. And then, so are we looking at maybe the top of the tower?
I would say higher.
More like a water tower kind of thing, right?
Okay.
You're thinking so that it can be seen.
Yeah, when you're driving.
From as you're driving by or whatever.
Over the bridge, whatever, yeah.
I'm not opposed to it. I just would like to see what it would look like.
Yeah, I mean, it's good, some concept.
All right, item one, discussion. Steve?
Thank you, Mayor. Item number one tonight is a discussion for a Class P liquor license, but specifically, it says on the agenda, Class P FVPD, which is Fox Valley Park District. Right now, we have a Class P liquor license on the book. The Class P liquor license is for both the... In theory, we have three park districts in town, but only two that have parks. So, the two that have parks are the Batavia Park District and the Fox Valley Park District. The current license is only held by the Fox Valley Park District because they're the only ones who have requested it, but I just want to make that clear. So, any changes we make is not just for Fox Valley Park District, it's also for the Batavia Park District that has three parks, should they ever want to do this. It's important to note that in case, because these conversations are very... For park areas in general, so it would apply to any park. So, that being said, the current way it works at the park district is they allow liquor in a few different ways. So, the most common way would be that the park district hosts an event, a public event, and they supply the liquor, and they're the ones distributing it. You know, they're bassed and trained, it's their staff, they're distributing it to the public. Other ways are the way that we allow any business to do it, a special use permit or slash the special event permit, which would be, you know, a charitable organization or a brewery that has its own liquor license is the one selling at an event, a public event, at the venue. Then, the other one is the catering license, which is, okay, I'm having a wedding, I'm going to host it at the Wilds, and now I'm hiring a caterer with a liquor license who is going to provide bar service at this event. What we don't have, and I shouldn't even say, we do actually technically have BYOB too for public events, but those have to have the liquor commissioner's special approval ahead of the event. So, with all that being said, the one thing we don't have is if someone wants to rent a venue for a birthday party, whatever, and they say, okay, I just want to bring a cooler for my guests, you know, I don't want to pay a bar service, I just want to bring in a couple coolers of beer. We don't have a service for that. Some park districts allow it. And so, we looked into it, and what we came up with was a change that would allow the Fox Valley Park District to have said type of BYOB, so to speak, for a private party. It would be limited to only private parties. These aren't public events. So, this is, I'm renting a space from the park district, I would like to bring in a cooler of beer. The new way that we wrote it, for your review, would be that they still have to adhere to a list of rules set by the park district. The park district actually provided us a list of what they do for the barn, which I believe is at Blackberry Farm, and so when they rent that out, and it has a list of the insurance requirements the park district requires, all of the stipulations for anyone bringing their own beer, the liability, all of that. So, they have to sign that agreement for any time they rent and bring their beer into a park district facility. Our code would require the park district to have such an agreement with anybody who wanted to rent the venue and bring their own beer in for a private event. So, that's one change. The other change was that, Mike, it's another government entity. We have an interesting kind of relationship on how we charge government entities, so we try not to double charge another government entity, since we're a government entity. So, a lot of times, what we'll do is we'll waive the fee. But I'll give you an example of how we do it with building permits. If the park district came in and got a building permit, we would waive the fee, the actual building permit fee, that the village charges, but they would still pay any third-party fees. So, if we sent it out to an engineering firm or an architect, someone outside of our purview, that we are now having to pay village funds for, then we do charge the government entity, because now we're out of pocket. So, in this case, we're just saying, rather than charge the park district $250, we're proposing to just waive the $250 fee. You know, potentially, the only cost at a village would be a nominal cost to run a background check. And Joe and I were even talking before the meeting, the Fox Valley Park District has its own police department, and they're a government entity, so I'm not even sure they're subject to the same background checks, and if they are, we can check. Their police department might even be able to do their own check.
You'd do a background check on somebody who was a private party, who was going to have BYOB? Is that who you're talking about, doing a background check on?
No, the liquor license holder. So, in this case, every holder of a liquor license, so Gas and Wash is next.
Sure.
Whoever's on the liquor license for Gas and Wash is the owner, and the liquor license holder would be background checked. So, in this case, it's kind of funny, because we were trying to decide who would even be background checked for the park district, you know, who's actually on the liquor application anyways. It's an entity.
So, if one of these events came about, would their police department, park district police department, come out and check up on things?
They can. It doesn't mean they will. So, what I mean by that is, we had this question when we first created the license. The village has overlapping jurisdiction over police matters, and we even have an IGA with the park district to enforce park district rules. So, our police department can check on a venue at any time and still enforce the village's liquor codes. In the past, and I'm going to pass this to Chief DeLeo, they used to have a provision where, I think they used to have an officer show up.
They used to have a provision where if there was alcohol served, they had to have two uniform officers on site for the event. And I think when they created the Wilds, they struck that from their code. But we do, a lot of times overnight, we will check their parking lots by, like Red Oak and areas like that, and find people hanging out and doing whatever. So, we do Island Park, we do take enforcement action on their property, because we have that IGA with them.
I think it's just kind of opening a can of worms. Like, if you allowed somebody to host a birthday party and rent out a gazebo or something, then all of a sudden, somebody else is going to be like, oh, we can just, like, go grill up at the gazebo. There isn't anybody up there today. Let's bring a cooler and hang out and grill or whatever. They're not going to get a permit.
So, but they could be doing that now. So, I mean, in theory, anybody could walk up to a gazebo and start grilling. It'd be the same situation. I mean, there's... At the events, we limit where they can have it, and they still have the ability under the code that... I mean, they're doing this now. So, technically, they have a liquor license right now to have events at these venues. And they could be wandering the park with the beer. They're supposed to have it in the designated area. That was actually the last thing on our list to loosen the restrictions on, is where they can have them and make the park the actual designated area, because there's some events where the park district doesn't even have them. And if you look at our code, it'll require it to be in, let's say, places that are lit under the... Like, that meet the village's code for lighting. Parks aren't going to meet the code for lighting, because most of the areas of the park don't have light. So, the park district has events where they're actually in the woods, and they're actually doing campfire beer. So, like, technically, that event wouldn't even be allowed, because there's no lighting there.
So, the private party versus the corporate or whoever's, you know, renting it, is there a different insurance that's needed, or is it all the same?
Not that I'm aware of. The form from the park district is just, this is the standard. I think it was a million-dollar liability insurance policy they have to provide.
So, really, no difference. Right now, they're having it, there's no policing, right?
Correct.
Other than occasional, if somebody want to drive up there and see what's going on, so...
So, then does a resident have to get that insurance policy?
Yes.
Anybody who rents it out has to have the insurance. That's what we were told by the park district, so...
So, they're not going to piggyback onto the park district's insurance? If they're bringing... If they're, you know, I'm going to have a birthday party there at the Wilds, and I want to bring in, you know, some beer and wine for my guests. I have to have the... It's like dram shop insurance, right?
Correct.
The insurance. I have to provide that for my party. And do I have to show that to the village, or do I have to show that to the park district? Do I have to prove that before I have my event?
We can do it that way. We can do it. The way we wrote it was that the park district has to have it. So, meaning, so that in case they get a request, like, a few days before an event, as long as the park district adheres to, you know, the listing they gave us of the rules that they're going to follow, they should be the ones collecting that.
Yeah.
Because we don't go, you know, to their events now.
We don't need more paperwork and stuff.
As long as the park district is collecting it, and they're following the rules, they're the ones who would be in violation of our liquor license.
Right.
The park district would be.
Stop allowing them having it up there if there's problems.
Right, the park... Exactly. So, what we do is, we would pull the liquor license from the park district if they didn't adhere.
I guess, given what you just said, I'm fine with it. The idea is, right, we don't want to be responsible or have any liability for people who are going to bring that themselves and provide alcohol to their guests at a party. So, if that situation is covered for liability by the Fox Valley Park District's insurance policy, then I don't have any objection to it.
And I'm... I mean, I'm not an expert in insurance. I mean, Kevin could jump in here, but on their website, they talked about, they go through someone called Pderma, which is their risk management agency that offers liability insurance. So, they would still have to... It's not the park district's insurance, I would assume, is covering. Like, our insurance policy isn't going to cover our private entity for liability. They cover the village's liability. So, if someone does something on our property, it's still the insurance. Like, every time I've done a special event where we've required a certificate of insurance, the village might be named additionally insured, because it's our property, but it's their insurance policy covering the event. Like, the village isn't covering the event for them. We're just providing the land, and they're basically indemnifying us that if something happens, their insurance is going to cover it.
But this isn't not even our land, so I mean, we're just...
Correct. Which is more the reason why the park district would want to make sure that they... Anyone who's doing this would adhere to that.
Right.
Yeah, if something went wrong, what... Whose liability is it? It's the park district's, right?
I mean, to me, I mean, it's not our land, and it's not our event.
Right.
I mean, who's going to sue who? They're probably going to sue the park district, because it's park district land. They're going to sue the people that hosted the party. They probably are not going to sue the village. I mean, it's possible that they could, but...
If we allow the permit.
Right. I say it's possible, but... And maybe they do, because, you know, they'll sue everybody and hope it sticks against somebody.
Join everybody to hope for it.
Right, yeah. So, it is possible.
Yeah, I'd keep it to regular... I'd keep it to regular liquor license holders and not individuals.
Does it sound like there's multiple events like this, that they're... The reason why they're asking this all of a sudden? Does it seem like there's coming up frequently, or are they trying to get, like, every town to be the same? Do they say the other towns handle it a certain way?
No, it came up. We actually had a trustee who had someone approach him about it, and then it came up to us, and we said, well, we can look into it, see if that's something the park district would be good with. And the park district actually did say that. They said that, you know, right now, it's kind of onerous. You have to have a bartender or a licensed person sell. There's other venues that you can basically rent out a space in other park districts, bring a cooler in, and you just sign the liability, provide the insurance, and you can have the event.
My concern would be, there's 500 cars up there, some Friday night, that somebody's having a party, but all of a sudden, it's like, you know, or if it's a corporate event or something where you have a bartender and maybe a little more official, maybe you won't have that. I don't know. I'm just a little bit concerned about, you know...
Well, we don't have to change it. We don't have to change it. Yeah. If the board doesn't want to.
Well, it's a good discussion.
Yeah, no, I'm just... Like I said, I'm just wondering why all of a sudden it popped up, is really it. If it's something that they're having trouble with, or if it was just a one-off, I don't know. Do we got to please everybody type situation? I mean, if it's just a one-off, then...
No, but it brought us to the opportunity to look at the fact that we thought the liquor code was really onerous, because, like, requiring a park district to adhere to things like zoning setbacks. Like, for instance, in the code here, it's... One of the changes is basically taking out the zoning, so...
I mean, some of that we could still change.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, sure.
So, you have here, you have things like, you know, it has to be... It can't be within 500 feet of a residence. Well, other than Island Park, the other parks are going to be, even if they are within 500 feet, they're going to be several hundred feet away from a residence, and it's going to be shaded by trees and all kinds of, you know, obscurities in between. And then, you have things like the lighting restrictions, and, let's see, the other one was, you can't have it in any setback. Well, there's not one park that's got a setback that's up against a residential zoning. I mean, even on Grant Street, you have a river in between the homes on Grant and Island Park, so it's not going to be, like, five feet from some fence line. And here's the thing...
You have, like, Fern Park, though. Wouldn't that be considered Fox Valley Park District?
So, if Fern Park wanted, they're not one of the three parks licensed. So, every park has to get licensed individually, and the liquor commissioner has the right to impose any restrictions on any individual park.
Got it.
And that's actually... And that was added in the code as a very specific thing that the liquor commissioner can adhere. Mike specifically wrote, "The local liquor commissioner may impose special conditions that are unique to each licensed premises for the preservation of health, safety, and welfare of the public, and to minimize noise and other adverse impacts on adjacent properties, provided that additional conditions shall be described in writing and become part of the conditions for the license on particular premises." So, basically, if the park district wants to come and they want Fern to have, you know, events, they're going to have to go, because right now, the only licensed venues are the three: Island Park, Red Oak, and the Wilds.
Got it.
So, those are the only three. So, any... And they'd have to go, basically, through the board to add them to the liquor code as a licensed premises. So, you would have the ability to regulate it. And the other thing, too, is, all the licenses still have to adhere to the noise ordinance. So, it says that specifically. So, no matter where you go, they can't just party to, like, the venues here are until 10:30. Mike did change the Wilds to 11. That was one of the proposed changes, and that's because they actually want to rent the place out to 11, because that's a more standard time to close a party off or a wedding. So, that's a small change in there. But like I said before, if nobody wants to change the serving part, but is okay with maybe loosening up the zoning setbacks, we can keep the other stuff in.
If, as it exists right now, though, if somebody wanted to have a private wedding, let's say, and rented the space at the park district, the mayor could give them a special permission to have liquor, bring their own liquor?
No. So, if someone wanted a wedding right now, the way it would go is, the liquor license allows that person having the wedding to have liquor at that event. But they have to... The people that are providing the liquor has to be a caterer with a state liquor license, a business with a state liquor license to sell liquor, or the park district itself. So, it has to be someone who already has a state license to sell liquor.
And they would have to hold that insurance policy.
Yeah.
And usually, it would be the company that would do that, yeah.
Here's a question.
Yeah.
What if some family had, let's say, a small reunion, and wanted to use the park and bring a cooler of beer, like, on a Saturday afternoon? Is that not allowed?
Correct. That was the...
There's no liquor allowed in the...
The change would allow that.
Yeah, yeah. There's no liquor allowed at all, unless it's with a licensed vendor of some kind, huh?
Correct.
Yeah.
I believe it's a $500 fine if they do, because I know somebody who's looking at the gazebo over there, and he's sitting there calling up your...
So, that if they brought their cooler on Saturday afternoon, and we're having, like, a barbecue, they could get in trouble?
Yeah.
That could happen out here, too.
Yeah.
Right?
And that's the point I was getting at. I'm not, you know, obviously, it doesn't matter to me, the way, whatever the board wants to do is fine. But that's the thing. I mean, if anybody violates or doesn't follow the rules of the parks in general, we already have the ability to enforce them, too. Even if it's on Friday at, like, 3:00 in the afternoon, and someone goes there and opens up a six-pack. If the park district doesn't allow drinking on a premises without a license or a permit from them, then they are in violation of that ordinance.
Well, I have to say, I'm fine with it.
Yeah.
It sounds that, you know, it's through the Fox Valley Park District. It's better to have them come and do it in an organized way that we know about, rather than to go about it where we don't know about it. Now, that couldn't happen at the Wilds, obviously, because they have to make a reservation. But, you know, like you say, runs through the Fox Valley Park District's insurance. I mean, I really don't have a problem with it. I think...
I think they take the liability, don't they, Kevin? Or wouldn't the park district be responsible?
Yes, certainly. Certainly, they would have liability for owning the land, and... Yeah.
And so, how would that work? Let's say, a private individual had a party, and something happened, and they started suing people. Could... You couldn't... In other words, they couldn't then in turn sue the village as well, right?
Sure, they could.
Oh, they could.
You can sue anybody.
That doesn't mean they're going to be successful.
This seems similar to me. I don't really have a problem with it myself.
To me, this is how I would look at it. And like I said, Kevin, you tell me for mom, but I would say the apples-to-apples comparison would be this. The park district is the liquor license holder, just as a restaurant is the liquor license holder for that venue. You can rent out a private party and go to the park district and follow their rules. You can go to a restaurant and follow the rules. If something happens at either venue, a restaurant, it's just because the village issued a liquor license to the establishment, didn't mean that we are there that moment, checking IDs or doing that stuff. That is the responsibility of the liquor license holder.
Yeah, I'm fine with it.
Yeah, I am, too. Actually, I don't have any object. I'm not fine with it, but I'm not a... I don't have any objection to it.
Yeah, I mean, I don't feel strongly either way, quite honestly, other than doing it just because, like I said, I mean, we're doing this just because we feel like doing it. That's one... I don't understand that, but if it's becoming like a demand, I can see why we'd want to do it. But again, either way, I'm 50/50, honestly, either way, but just to make a change for...
What about the other stuff?
You know, the other stuff, absolutely.
Fine.
Yep.
Yeah, and like I said, when it came up, we reached out to the park district, and we asked them if they would like to see the change. So, Mike did reach out to that.
So, I was going to say, so they didn't even approach us with it?
It wasn't like, yeah, they're aware of this. It wasn't like we just...
So, there's not even been any requests for it. So, that's what I'm saying, is we're just making the change now, and for no reason. I mean, but whatever everybody thinks, I guess I'm okay with.
I'm fine with it. I don't think there's any reason not to, but I also don't... I'm kind of like where Todd is. I...
Well, the reason not to is that nobody's asked for it. That's why.
Well, you said somebody asked for it, or something came up.
Yeah, and like I said before, just because, the way I look at it is, it doesn't... Sometimes, if it isn't even a one-off, but if it brings up a point, like, when we did this first liquor license for the park district, I remember us making it tight, and we made it extremely tight. And I think it was because there was, we weren't sure exactly how it would work. We hadn't, you know, allowed it really on parkland before, and we wanted to see how it would go. And I think the park district was under the impression that we made it tight because we were uncomfortable. So, this time around, we're looking at it, and we always update codes and things when we think that a change might happen. So, when it got brought up, we looked at it, and Mike, being in charge of business licenses, looked at it and said, you know, this is a park district deal. There's a lot of code here that I'm not sure is so tight, like, needs to be this tight. So, it's up to the board. I mean, the board, sometimes we just propose things, and if the board doesn't want to go with it, you don't have to.
So, the park district had no issues, either way?
They didn't come to us directly.
Right, but I mean, even now, with the situation...
Yes, Mike said the park district was, yeah, go for it.
I thought it was fine.
I, you know, I could be wrong. I want to speak, like, without looking up, but I thought that's what they allow at Cool Acres, and...
Yeah, I think they do. And then, you said Blackberry? They also allow you to bring it in the barn.
Well, they give us an agreement for the barn.
Yeah, yeah. I'm okay with it.
I mean, if Kevin doesn't have a problem with it, I don't have a problem with it.
Yeah, that was... That's my main thing. As long as we don't think we're raising our liability.
Kevin would be saying something, obviously, if he had a problem, so...
If there's a problem, then we'll come back and change it.
He'd be like, if Kevin's fine, I'm fine.
And, you know what, one last thing, sorry. And this is just, in my experiences, in all the years I required certificates of insurance in a previous life, when I overlooked special events, you know, it was a permit requirement, it's amazing how many individuals or smaller groups will not go forward with a party, because they don't want to be... They don't want the expense of having to provide the liquor. So, there is a chance that someone, birthday party of 30 people, might look in and be like, if their fee or whatever, or in it, Pderma allows them to buy, like, a supplemental package through them, maybe that few hundred-dollar fee or whatever it is for that package, maybe they don't even do it, because it is extensive and expensive.
All right.
Or they just say they're going to roll the dice and see if they get caught.
We can always revoke it, also. I mean, that's the thing that I always hang my hat on. If it doesn't work out for some, if something happens, you can always change it.
But in truth be told, that...
It's not written down forever.
I think that's what I was getting at early, though, is they could technically roll the dice now. If they tell the park district they're not having liquor in an event, they can show up, rent that event, and still bring liquor, and it'd be the same thing. They would just be doing it illegally.
Yeah. All right, thank you. Item two, Steve, Gas and Wash?
Item number two is also a liquor license. It's a new Class G liquor license for Gas and Wash. And as everybody here knows, Gas and Wash is building quickly, and the catch that the gas station liquor license is for retail sales of beer and wine in original package only, and not for consumption on premises. In this case, this is a pretty simple license. We already have, with Gas and Wash, this will be our eighth license in town for a gas station. We put in there, did not want to confuse people, but we thought it was worth saying, as a reminder, because Gas and Wash qualifies for video gaming through the state law, they do not need this liquor license for video gaming. So, this license has nothing to do with the fact that they are moving forward with video gaming.
The video gaming was already approved, correct?
It's through state law, because they qualify as a truck stop.
Okay.
And truck stops are exempt from having a local liquor license.
I do have this comment. Is that 10 slot machines? That's four more than I've seen in any restaurant, bar establishment, anywhere in this area.
That's what's allowed?
That's what's in their plan.
Because they qualify as a large truck stop under the state law.
So, we failed.
The state law, we... The state law is separate from the village, the code. We can't prohibit state law.
We could have prohibited the truck stop, the filling up of the trucks.
Oh, if the board had denied Gas and Wash, then you wouldn't have a Gas Wash there.
Yeah, we failed there.
That's... I'm just... And I understand all of that, and it's just a comment for me that I just want to make, that to me, that's four more machines than is in the largest space anywhere around here. I don't like that. You know, actually, I didn't vote to approve for Gas and Wash anyway, so I'm going to stick with how I felt in the beginning about it. It was approved, and that's where we are, and that's fine, and I'm fine with the liquor license, so...
How do restaurants... I mean, you could maybe explain, but how do some restaurants, like in City Aurora, they only allow five machines in all their restaurants? How are they... How is this different than that?
Because it's a truck stop.
Yeah, because state law allows up to six machines, and by local ordinance, you can reduce the number or preclude establishments from having video gaming machines, except for truck stops. So...
And you can only do it through the liquor license. So, in other words, we could limit our liquor license to saying, you can only have four machines with this type of liquor license. In this particular situation, it's not tied to a local liquor license. So, they can just get it directly through the state, and we don't have any control.
Correct. And, but, I mean, that was, we were trying to make sure that the board knew that when you approved Gas and Wash as well, that they were pursuing video gaming at that time.
Yeah, but nobody ever said that there was going to be 10 machines.
I mean, there's nothing we can do about it now, but I agree with that statement, that if we would have known there had been 10, I think some of us would have thought differently.
We said at that meeting that we did not even really want them to have video gaming machines.
Yeah, I was under the impression that it wasn't a truck stop. Didn't it?
No, it had to be...
I think that issue came up, and I thought they negated that. I don't know if I'd have been a, I'm not for a truck stop.
It's not considered a, it shouldn't be considered a truck stop, right?
Right, we wouldn't necessarily consider it a truck stop.
It's based on the volume of fuel.
It's based on, yeah, so if you look in the memo, we specifically put in the state law, this is what qualifies as a large truck stop. Within three road miles of a freeway interchange, which would be I-88, be at least three-acre facility, I think it's five acres, include separate diesel islands, which it has, sells or retails 50,000 gallons of diesel per month, and includes parking spaces for commercial motor vehicles. That's the definition for a truck stop by state law under the Video Gaming Act.
So, correct me if I'm wrong, I recall the discussion that we had at the time that this was before us, where it has to be a very, it has to meet all of those requirements that you just read, and then it had some sort of specific pumps in the back?
Yeah.
Right, there's only a very specific type of truck stop that qualifies for video gaming? And that's the type of truck stop this is, is that correct?
It meets the state law for a truck stop.
Right.
It's not your standard that you would think of, like, when you're driving down and you see these gigantic truck stops.
Yeah, it doesn't have showers, and all that kind of stuff.
No, no, I knew that, no, I know that.
But having it at six to 10, then, so, like, we were just talking to six.
That was, yeah.
Is that something new, they changed it to 10, or...
Did we just miss that?
I don't think the number of machines was ever discussed, only that they were going to be able to get it, get them.
And the max that was six.
Yeah.
No, I don't remember the max ever.
No, that's what's allowed in a restaurant, or... That's not what's, well, generally, yeah.
Right.
Or...
No, I, the num, my recollection...
I think we, I think we asked how many could they have.
I don't think so.
We'd have to go back to those notes.
I would imagine we just all missed it.
I don't remember that discussion, so...
Yeah, tons of them.
Is this something, I mean, is that 10 thing something that you guys all learned newly, or...
Ten is new to me.
I was going to say, it's okay, I mean, it's okay, I think we all missed this, I mean, but, nothing we can do about it now, but I think if we would have known that upfront, which, I don't remember what the renderings looked like when they came in before, if they're, if we were like, oh my God, there's 10 machines, there's, that's not allowed type thing, that we would have thought differently, but, again, not that we can do it at this point.
It says it's been 10 for, since 2019, now that was just a quick search.